A call to order the Williamsport City Council meeting of Thursday, October 24th, 2019 at 7:35 PM in City Hall Council Chambers. Please rise for the invocation by Councilman Slaughter and remain standing for the flag salute.
Lord, we thank you once again for bringing us together here this evening to do your work and to do the work of the city. Lord, we ask that you guide our thoughts, guide our decisions. Lord, let those decisions be what is best for the city and for the residents and the taxpayers, Lord. As always, we pray that you watch over and place your arms around those who are in harm's way, both here and abroad, Lord. We ask that you be with us all, Lord. God doesn't keep us; we ask all these things. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Slaughter. We'll move to item three, approval of City Council minutes dated 10/10/19.
So moved.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Questions or corrections from council tonight? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Mrs. Fosna?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Frank. Limited courtesy of the floor. Item four, we have none tonight, no requests. Item five, ordinance issuance of general obligation note. Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
Ordinance of the city of Williamsport, Leicoming County, Pennsylvania, authorizing and securing the issuance of a general obligation note in the maximum principal amount of $2 million pursuant to the Pennsylvania Local Government Unit Debt Act as interim and permanent financing to construct improvements to city streets, parking and recreation facilities, Bowman Field reimbursable costs, River Valley Transit infrastructure, and Graffius Run stormwater management, bus purchases, and paving-related expenses, accepting a bank loan proposal to purchase the note, setting forth the terms and substantial form of the note, creating a sinking fund and appointing a sinking fund depository for the note, pledging the full faith, credit, and taxing power of the city to secure the note and authorizing related actions and documents.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. On the second and final reading of this ordinance, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion and second. Thank you. Mr. Nichols, welcome.
Good evening, President Allison, members of council. Ordinance in front of you approves a proposal from CNN Bank for a two-year line of credit and a subsequent term provision needing a very desirable rate of 2.978 percent. Again, this line of credit replaces interim financing which recently expired and needs to be renewed as required by the city's RACB grants and other PENDOC grants in place for the Third Street Gateway Project, Bowman Field, and most recently, the Memorial Park project that is proposed. The Finance Committee on Tuesday recommended adding language to Section 6 on page three, actually, the bottom of Section 6, which is highlighted on the revised ordinance that you received. Basically, the words that were added are the use of reimbursed funds. So the sentence in its entirety reads, "During the drawdown period, the Director Financial Adviser Finance Committee of the Council of the use of any drawdown funds or use of reimbursed funds under the note and the grant intended for reimbursement for such use." So that is in addition to other notification provisions in that particular paragraph. So with that, I think we've hopefully satisfied the legislative intent of council and provides safeguards that not only during the line of credit period, but then when the two-year line of credit drawdown period ends, council then will make the ultimate decision whether or not longer-term financing is needed for some major projects that are envisioned, such as Graffius Run or Levy Project and others that are identified in the ordinance. That's it. I'll defer back to Chair and the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Ms. Mealy?
It is true that poor Mr. Nichols has brought this item to us multiple times now at the Finance Committee, as well as here in City Council. And we do appreciate the administration's willingness to work with council's, I think, justified concerns that further debt is not an appropriate thing for the city at this stage. And so we want to make as certain as we can that we don't, so to speak, accidentally incur further debt through this loan that is intended to be basically totally reimbursed to us from several grants that we have, but could in the long run be utilized for city needs elsewhere, too. Finance Committee did drill down with Mr. Nichols even further on the wording on page three, which I think is one of only two areas in this whole document that's been changed in the course of the last couple of readings, in an attempt to make certain that council and the Finance Committee in particular were absolutely aware if the city were to move forward with any spending of these funds, it would not be reimbursable by a grant. Theoretically, that limits our exposure to the cost of interest over the course of the two years, which, of course, is something that we're used to paying on these sort of non-revolving or revolving lines of credit in the course of utilizing grant funds. When we have to pay them out and wait for reimbursement, we pay that interest. And that's more or less a cost of doing business and a cost of being allowed to utilize millions of dollars of state and federal taxpayer funds for projects in the city. The only other thing I would say is that I will be with the city on council through the end of the period of this note, through the two years that the note runs. I don't know that I'll be on the Finance Committee. I don't know where I'll be, but I will be paying attention because I continue to be -- I think sometimes we fall into this habit of thinking that taking on further debt for the city or raising taxes is something that simply has to be done. And it is true that our expenses increase and we have to find a way to meet those needs, but debt is not a responsible thing as a city government, any more than it is as an individual. And so while I understand that this is a tool that we need to help us manage multiple grants that we're running through the next couple of years, I'll be keeping a close eye on the way that we utilize it to make certain that we're not incurring debt without being well-aware of that happening and without there being a very good reason for it. With that said, the two members of Finance in attendance forwarded the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can add to that, there, I failed to say that there are $8 million approved grants for those three projects that need the line of credit over the next two years. It doesn't mean we're necessarily going to need the whole $2 million; it depends on the cash flow and the reimbursements and how the timing of those particular reimbursements. But in two years, then, in two years is really a long time. And I presume that at some point, we're going to get grants for the Levy Project, for Graffius Run, and just as the grants we have in place now require local share typically. So, you know, by being able to lock in a low-interest rate gives whomever, the council, the mayor, to have a resource available to make decisions in terms of local share needs and have a tool in place and to safeguard so those decisions can be made. So, you know, it's sort of the best of both worlds, but again, I think there's enough notification in here, which I think is great, that it gives everybody reminders of when decisions need to be made concerning this. And as far as during the line of credit period and the interest-only payments for that in that spreadsheet, we do have grants and local commitments in place to provide that local money to pay for those interest payments and do not have to be absorbed by the general fund. So I think that's positive as well.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Questions?
I have no questions, but I sit on Finance Committee as well, and I understand very clearly that if we accept RACB money, which is really good money that we're able to do a lot of things within the city, we need to have this $2 million line of credit. That's important. If we don't take the RACB money, someone else will. I mean, it's that simple. I learned that in education, that if you didn't accept the money and the obligations that went along with it, some other community is going to. We've been fortunate to be able to do a lot of things within our community, but this line of credit is important to be able to pay the bills as we go without going into the general fund. And I think that this little line that we put in on Section 6 is important because it will open more communication of how it's spent and how to let us know those kinds of things. I think that's something that's been lacking, is knowing that it's spent, but where did it go and how was it spent and how was it followed through with? So I think that's important, and that was why we wanted that little clause that was in there.
Very good. Neil, Mr. Henderson?
I might just note as well that it's -- usually every year, we also have a tax anticipation note of about the same amount. And these are things that, in our situation, we need to do to function. But it would be great, wouldn't it, if we could actually have $2 million in the bank so that we wouldn't have that tax anticipation note or have this line of credit this way? It would be great. And at a $25 million budget, $2 million in the bank should be reasonable, just a thought on that. And I know it's difficult. Here we are. We're in tough times, but I don't think we should lose sight of that goal because then we wouldn't be paying any interest on any of that. So I just wanted to throw that out there, not that there's anything we can do now, but I don't want to lose sight of that goal. I think that's important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Any other comments, questions? And I think all the council, thanks Finance Committee for and the administration, Mr. Nichols for working together to put that very important, small but very important addition in there for all of us. Hearing no other questions, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mrs. Fosna?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
No.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank.
Thank you.
Item six. Ordinance accepting a portion of Franklin Street located in the 8th Ward of the city. This is a final reading as well. Mrs. Frank, please.
An ordinance accepting a portion of Franklin Street located in the 8th Ward in the city of Williamsport.
Thank you. Is there a motion on this?
So moved.
Second. Motion and second. Mr. Bennet, welcome.
Good evening, President Allison and members of council. What you have in front of you is the final reading of the acceptance ordinance for the relocation of Franklin Street. This relocation is necessary for the new grand entrance of Leicoming College, their multipurpose building. And as I said before, the portion of land which the new section of Franklin Street sits on was previously owned by Leicoming College, and the city now has taken control of that, owns that. There has been no changes since the first reading, and that's all I have for now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Any new questions from council tonight? If not, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mrs. Fosna?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, and motion passes for the final reading. Thank you, Mrs. Frank.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Item seven, ordinance renaming College Place to Warrior Way, final reading. Mrs. Frank, please.
An ordinance renaming College Place to Warrior Way.
You said that a lot easier than I did. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion and second. Thank you. Mr. Winder, welcome.
Good evening. This is just the final reading for the ordinance renaming College Place to Warrior Way, which is a privately-owned road by Leicoming College. Nothing else to add.
Okay. And there's nothing new, anything from council tonight? If not, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mrs. Fosna?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Item eight, ordinance designated College Place, final reading.
An ordinance designating College Place.
Mr. Winder?
An ordinance designating a portion of roadway in front of the new Leicoming College building connecting to the realigned Franklin Street. Once again, it is a private roadway. It would name this new stretch of roadway to be College Place for mailing purposes for Leicoming College.
Thank you. Is there a motion from council?
So moved.
There's a motion and second on the final reading. Any more questions tonight? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Mrs. Fosna?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Motion passes. Item nine, resolution approving the purchase of playground equipment. Mrs. Frank, please.
Resolution approving the purchase of playground equipment, rubber bond surfacing, and related installation costs.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Mr. Pavlov.
Good evening, President Allison, members of council. The resolution before you is to accept three CoStar quotes from MRC Company related to the Memorial Park playground equipment. The first quote is for playground equipment, all-inclusive. This quote was separated in order to achieve a manufacturer's grant of $65,000, I believe, as long as we make a purchase by next week. The second quote is for the installation of the equipment and also the rubber bond surface for the park, along with the installation there. The third quote, we've decided to go with the rubber bond surface in the existing playground areas. There was a lot of conversations during rec commission meetings, along with the Finance Committee, related to maintenance that would occur if we would go with a rubberized mulch or an existing wood mulch that was up there. So we were able to find it within the budget by taking out the contingency that we showed last meeting when we accepted the grant award to allow us to use rubber bond surface throughout the entire design. The manufacturer did provide pictures and sketches of the proposed equipment, which I believe you should all have at your seats, and we passed out at the Finance Committee for the members there. This was reviewed on Tuesday at the Finance Committee, and if there's any questions related to the financing, I'd be more than happy to answer, or Shawn Washington, the rec director, can discuss anything related to the equipment itself.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pavlov. It was reviewed by Finance.
It was, and forwarded to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. I'll reiterate once again, it was, I think, exceptionally impressive that the administration turned this item around as quickly as it did, especially given a changeover in recreation leadership and various other things. To be able to save $65,000 by getting this turned around by October 31st is impressive, and it makes a big difference in our ability to afford to do this project all at one go. Of note, I believe, we're also, my understanding was from Mr. Winder, I think, saving about $30,000 because Streets and Parks will be doing the excavation on the site before the contractor comes in to install the new equipment. And we are still, while you'll see on the beginning of the memo, the sources for funding for this item, we are still hopeful. The one thing that we have not been able to secure in the run-up to beginning to purchase the equipment is potential private donations, but I know that Jessie Novinger, when she was still with the city, had been working on some private donations, and hopefully we can realize that here in the coming years, since we do have another 10 months until the items actually go into place. But anyway, Finance was very excited about the project, especially the decision, I think, to do the rubberized surface over all of it, saving us wear and tear and a lot of Streets and Parks time over the next 10 years. And we've ordered the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Questions or comments?
I have a question. When will the money, the $200,000, when is it in our hands?
That's reimbursement-based, so we'll have to incur the expenditure before we'll get -- so there's a potential that we'll tap into the $2 million that was just approved if we don't have money on hand to offset that.
That's a great example of why we have to have a line of credit. Thank you.
Mr. Henderson?
Just wondering about the private donations. We're looking for that. Is there a plan going forward for that? I know Ms. Mealy just referenced it, but I'm wondering, is there a real plan right now, or is that just kind of, we're hoping to get that together in the future? Just wondering.
I think now that the project's approved, I think it's a key time that we can start looking out there for any donors that would wish to participate. I know that there were some names, I don't want to mention them, I'm not sure whether they want to be recognized or have their names brought out at this time, that showed some interest, but no full commitments, to my knowledge. So I think that it's just a matter of getting back into the grind of things now that we know the project is moving forward, and we can give them a full plan as to what the project involves.
Okay. Yeah, that's good. I just wanted to make sure we didn't just throw that in there because we didn't know what else to put in that line. You know what I mean? But there is a very real potential.
There's enough Act 13 surplus for 2019 to cover it. We'd like to reduce that to be able to utilize that funding for other projects that those funds would be eligible for.
So there's a second plan?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would also note, just that there has been talk for a long time of attempting to secure private donations, but we do have the funding in place otherwise. But I think part of potentially working with private donors is being able to show that you, in fact, have a grant source in hand, which we didn't have definitively until we accepted the grant just two weeks ago. So, you know, all of it sort of has to, right? It's just an exceptionally quick timeline, which is excellent for this one, so, yeah.
I see the mayor and Mr. Washington. Do you have any comments to make?
I just want to say that this is a very incredible time for this playground to be coming back to the city. I know that the previous one had some real safety concerns, and this is a very positive thing for the children of the community of Williamsport, for them to have a safe playground in which they can enjoy with their friends and other people in the community, just to have a safe playground where they can go and play.
Thank you.
Finally, I'd just like to say, this will be another positive asset for our children, and I appreciate city council support, and let's get moving on it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I think everything's been said that needed to be said. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Does anything to say from rec, do you?
No, you guys covered it all. Yeah, I mean, well, let me just, I think we should also, I think we did a little bit with Jessie Novinger, but she put a lot of time and effort into this as well prior to her departure. So I know the current administration has, but also Jessie put a lot of time into it, so just like to thank her as well.
Absolutely. Thank you for doing that. Mrs. Frank, please.
Mrs. Fosna?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Item 10, certificate of appropriateness for 36 West 4th Street. Mrs. Rowdy, welcome.
Good evening, President Allison and members of council. What you have before you is a certificate of appropriateness request to construct a new side entrance exit door on the east side of the facility with a stoop and railings. I attached some drawings and a photograph of where it's located. The first drawing you have is an elevation view of what it's going to look like from the parking lot, and then the other one is a floor plan showing the interior layout, how it comes down and out on the 4th Street. I also had a picture showing where it's going to be located, and I just got a rendering here tonight of the side view, is actually what it's going to look like, the white doors and the black railing in the stoop. If you have any questions of myself, I'm here, or we do have representative of one of the owners. There is an agreement between the Parking Authority and the owner to be able to use this portion of the ground. It will be a signed document, and I'll have it in the file. I cannot allow them to work until it's done. You're basically approving the aesthetics, the looks of this, and I can't allow it to be done until I get that document in hand, which they're in the process of doing.
Right. Questions? Mr. Noviello?
Just a doorway like this isn't anything particularly out of the ordinary, is it?
No.
So I'm looking at the spatial issue after, what's on the far side of that?
The reason being is, under the building code, which we get into, this was originally a bank, and then it was office. The office space used the first, second, and third floors, okay? Exiting's a little different than if you have a restaurant on the first floor, and now I have an apartment. You can have, you need two means of egress. One has to be fire-enclosed, which the one in the back is. They do have a set of intercommunicating set of steps, if you see, coming down, but you don't want the people having a key to your restaurant to use it. So the best thing to do is to board it off and put a door out so they don't have any access to the restaurant. That's the reason why.
Thank you. Mr. Slaughter? Are there any ADA regulations?
Not on this, because you're below five units. Once you get to five or more units, you're required then to put your elevator and make a handicap accessible unit. And they only have two, or three, four, I'm sorry, yes, we did discuss that, four. So they're right below what they're required to do. We did discuss that on the site with the architect.
Got you. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Mrs. Frank, then.
Mrs. Fosna?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Motion passes. And thank you for, yes, thank you for being a faithful business in the city of Williamsport. We appreciate it. That takes us to item 11. Certificates of appropriateness for HARB. We have 619 West 4th Street, removing deteriorated slate and retaining and repairing slate and pointing a chimney. And then we have 1006 West 4th Street repairing an east porch stair rail, bottom handrail, and some painting. Is there a motion and second on these two?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank, please.
Mrs. Fosna?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Item 12, except for filing the ad hoc Ethics Committee meeting, minutes of 8/619, ERC minutes of October 1st, 19, and HARB minutes of 10/1519. Is there a motion and second on this?
So moved.
Motion and second. Any questions or corrections tonight? There are none? Mrs. Frank, please.
Mrs. Fosna?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Are we going too fast for everyone tonight?
[laughing]
Announcements. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Thursday, November 7th, 2019, at 7:30 PM, right here in City Hall Council Chambers. Upcoming meetings, Monday, October 28th, 12:00 PM, Planning Commission; Tuesday, October 29th, 3:30 PM, ERC. Tuesday, October 29th, 3:30 PM, ERC. Thursday, October 31st is Happy Halloween. What are our hours?
Chief?
(inaudible) 6 to 8.
Six to eight, okay.
And we encourage all citizens to be safe, parents to know where your children are, and to participate, be careful what they allow them to do.
Sounds good, chief. Thank you. So that's 6 to 8 PM for trick-or-treating on October 31st in the city. Tuesday, November 5th, 1:00 PM, Finance Committee. 2:30 PM, Public Works. 3:30 PM, Public Safety. And don't forget to vote. That's Election Day. Thursday, November 7th, 6:00 PM, Pension Board Meeting, and 7:30 PM, our council meeting.
Was there, I wonder, Ms. Mealy, was there a planned historic?
There is, in fact, I believe it was already advertised. Maybe it just didn't make the agenda because the, because of what we printed it, Janice. Didn't we have a November, oh, well, the Historic Preservation Meeting?
Yeah, Historic Preservation.
Was November 19th.
Was that the 19th? Okay, I couldn't remember if that was the 5th or 19th.
Right, okay.
Just wanted to make sure.
Sorry. Yes, it was, it's 19th that we advertised for.
19. We'll go next agenda.
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, for those anxiously awaiting Historic Preservation Committee meeting, that'll be on November 19th.
We always have a good crowd there. Sometimes we even get all the members.
Any comments or anything from council tonight?
I just wanted to, I wanted to note, tonight, James E. Brown Library had their big gala celebration, and it was, it's so encouraging to know that our library is used so heavily, and that we have such an interesting, wonderful library in the city of Williamsport, and that we support that library, and it's available to all ages, all kinds of people, and I enjoyed the celebration tonight and hope for them the best in the future.
It is a treasure.
It is a treasure.
Any other comments or questions or answer, do you have any answers tonight? Administration?
Yes, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before you speak, I, could we talk for a second?
No, I need, I, I'll speak, yes, I will speak to you out of respect, but I do have public comments that I'm going to make tonight.
Well, this is, this is council's meeting.
Excuse me?
This is council's meeting, and we've worked hard over the years to keep political commentary out of it, especially during an election.
This isn't political commentary. Somebody needs to speak up. Somebody needs to show, someone needs to show courage.
And there are, there are venues to speak up in. What I'm saying is, our city council meeting is not the venue for speaking on a political issue.
So you're defending inappropriate misleading comments attacking city employees?
No, I'm defending the policy of city council over the years in an effort to keep out politicizing, bringing a political campaign into our meetings. We've been very diligent to not allow people to campaign from that dais when they address the public. We've been, and what, I tried to get ahold of you today, and I left messages, this is not appropriate.
And I gave you a heads up. I think, you are the chair, you are the president of city council, that's your prerogative. But I'm going to be on record right now, is when, and you should know this, okay, and I'm not lecturing you, but there's only, my father told me this several times, there's only several times in your life that you should speak up about things that are very, very important, and stand up for what is right. When my employees are attacked, verbally attacked, and consultants are attacked with misleading comments, someone should be called out on it in a public forum. And if you're not allowing me to speak up, to me, shame on you, Mr. President.
Well, Mayor, perhaps I wasn't clear enough. I'm not stopping you from speaking out publicly about any issues. What I'm saying is, we are still in the council meeting, and the policy has been to not allow public discussion of political things. What you want to reference is a political ad run in the paper. That is part of a campaign, and coincidentally, it's for an office that you yourself are running for. So to allow you to politicize as an official running for that office, another person running for that office is entirely inappropriate, regardless of what your father said. There are times in places, yes, it demands us to speak up, but there are, the time has to fit the place, and your timing does not fit the place.
I'll finish by saying that I think it's spineless, I believe it's spineless when elected officials will not call out other officials. When you're being verbally attacked, and my staff is being verbally attacked, and someone can get away with it, I think it's totally inappropriate, and I think it's a bad measure to show for our children and our grandchildren that elected officials will not do the right thing and call somebody out by making cheap shots at this gentleman, this gentleman, and consultants.
That's enough, Mayor.
And I'm done. I'm done.
And I think it's the right thing to do, and I'm very proud to do it. I watched Marlene Whaley in this seat for many years, and Bill Hall, they protected the rights of council, they protected our meetings, they protected the process, and I'm not going to be bullied by you or kowtowed by you into giving in on those principles. It's a time and a place to stand up for those. You have plenty of opportunities. You're going to have a debate coming up with two men running for this office, and that is your opportunity to get political and to politicize whatever you want to. That's what that place is for. The city council meeting is not for that. Any comments or questions from the public tonight? If not, I'll entertain, I'm sorry, your name and address, please.
My name is Robert Kibler. When it comes to government employees, elected official, and public servants at all levels, the citizens of the community expect a standard of conduct that is of the highest standards of integrity, of good moral characters, and obedience to all laws that govern citizens and even in their private lives. This is speculation by the public, by the public would apply to all government employees in all departments of municipality, state, federal levels of government. One instance that had been come to my attention recently concerns Williamsport City zoning officer Gary Nar. Apparently, on the evening of February 22nd, 2019, Mr. Nar had been drinking at the New K Bar at 523 East Third Street, Williamsport. When he left establishment, he had struck a parked vehicle that was occupied by an individual and fled the scene. This is commonly known as a hit-and-run, and since the vehicle was occupied, it constitutes a misdemeanor under the vehicle code. In addition, when the investigating officer made contact with him at his residence, it was noted almost immediately that Mr. Nar was under the influence of alcohol, and according to the affidavit of probable cause, went back into the house and closed the door. After being initially confronted by the investigating, investigating Williamsport police officer, it took his wife to re-answer the door, at which time Mr. Nar was taken into custody of suspicions of driving under influence. He did have a, he did provide a blood alcohol sample, which resulted of a .223 BAC. Such an alcohol level is almost three times the legal limit. Witnesses at the scene indicated that Mr. Nar was operating of a hit-and-run vehicle which was registered to him. According to the affidavit of criminal complaint, Mr. Nar was charged with driving under the influence and hit-and-run a tenanted vehicle. Both charges are misdemeanors. The case is still pending. He has not been convicted of these offenses, and he will, and he is presumed innocent until proven guilty. I believe is the encumbrance upon Williamsport City Council that appropriate disciplinary action be taken against Mr. Nar for violating the standards of conduct that expects of Williamsport employees. He has also been past knowledge of, by myself, that such off-duty conduct by government employees will be subject to disciplinary action. I would request that you take this into consider, consideration and take appropriate action when it comes to his, to this city employees. Citizens of the community expect it. I have also seen in Williamsport Sun Gazette legal columns in the past that notice of such disciplinary action taken are made by public and could be attended by members of the public. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Oh, I have to announce, we're having an executive session at the close of the council meeting. Legal matters, and, yeah, that comes. Motion to adjourn. Yeah, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.